Welcome at 6:00 PM to the Thursday, July 24th scheduled meeting. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Johnson.
President.
Councilmember Orbach.
President.
Councilmember Westman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Morgan.
Here.
And Mayor Clark.
Here. Everybody please stand and join me with the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That'll bring us to item two, additions and deletions to the agenda.
Staff has one proposed change to this evening's agenda. Item 9B, which is to consider the Capitola Village and Wharf Business Improvement Area Assessments for fiscal year 2025-2026. Staff recommended in the staff report continuing that item August 28th. So staff would recommend continue making that continuance.
Thank you. Bring us to item three, presentations. Welcome.
Hello, Mayor Clark and council members. My name is Sophia Schwartzky and I serve as the Community Relations Manager for the Northern Region of Central Coast Community Energy. And I'm joined today by my colleague, Colleen Courtney. She'll stand up and wave over there. She is the Senior Accounts Manager for the City of Capitola. Thank you so much for the opportunity to provide an update on behalf of Central Coast Community Energy, also known as 3CE. I'm here to share highlights about our recent efforts to support your city. 3CE is the public agency that sources power for the Central Coast. We work in partnership with PG&E, who manages energy transmission and delivery. 3CE serves 30 cities and five counties, providing energy to 1.2 million people. 3CE is working to deliver our customers 100% clean and renewable energy. Last year, we delivered enough clean energy to power more than 350,000 homes along the Central Coast. These efforts prevented emissions equivalent to taking 105,000 gas-powered cars off the road for an entire year. By October of 2028, renewable energy is projected to supply 64% of 3CE's load, which puts us well ahead of state requirements. Over the next few slides, I will briefly highlight why battery storage plays such a critical role in this energy transition. Just one more slide. There we go. Batteries are essential to the energy transition and just as importantly, to customer affordability. Batteries capture renewable energy when the sun is shining and the wind is blowing, then release it later in the day when demand is high. They reduce fossil fuel reliance during peak hours, lowering electricity rates. On the residential side, batteries provide backup power and store cheap renewable energy for use during peak hours. So I wanted to show you a real-world example of battery storage in action. You might remember Labor Day weekend of 2022, when our state issued its most recent flex alert. The graph that you see here shows the statewide energy mix from that day. The red is representing fossil fuels. The green shows renewables, which peak during the day and sharply drop off at sunset. And what I want you to take a look at is the thin orange area. At the bottom, you'll see batteries charging during daylight hours. At the top, those same batteries discharge energy back into the grid when it's most needed. And if we could advance the next slide. Thank you. So now I want to take a look at a more recent heat wave. On July 4th of last year, despite another period of high energy demand, there was no need for a flex alert to avoid blackouts. The green bar representing renewables grew larger. The red bar representing fossil fuels became smaller. And the orange battery bar more than tripled. Batteries charged during the day and discharged power during peak evening hours, providing critical support when it was needed most. We are often asked if batteries are safe, especially after the fire at Vistra's Moss Landing Facility. I want to start by saying that none of the batteries we invest in at 3CE are located indoors like the Moss Landing Facility was. Rather, they are all outdoors, containerized units with built-in fire suppression technology. And I also do want to mention that the Moss Landing incident involved an older battery chemistry. And today's new systems use lithium iron phosphate, which is far more stable. And what this graph is showing here is that since 2018, battery failures have dropped by 98%. And that's despite installations increasing by 25,000%. Next slide, please. So at 3CE, we are investing in cutting-edge storage technology. And one project that I want to highlight for you is the Willow Rock Energy Storage Center. This project, once it's online, is going to use compressed air to power turbines. And it will be the largest compressed air storage project in the world. This project will provide 200 megawatts of power to 3CE's customers alone. 3CE is invested in multiple projects that are either online now or coming online soon. And the three projects that I have displayed on the slide here represent enough energy to power the homes of 250,000 3CE customers. Providing power is only a piece of 3CE's mission. We're also actively engaged in the communities we serve. Our outreach team is active across the region. We sponsor local events, we host webinars, and we lead workshops on our energy programs. To meet the needs of our diverse communities, 3CE has hired additional bilingual staff, expanded our translated materials, and developed an action plan focused on serving underserved communities. 3CE has programs that give our customers the tools to electrify and save money. For example, our Electrify Your Ride program offers up to $4,000 towards the purchase of an electric vehicle. Our other programs reduce the cost of purchasing electric appliances and battery storage and provide funding for the electrification of the ag industry. And this is the slide that I am especially excited to show you today. 3CE offers programs for the member agencies we serve, like the City of Capitola. These programs support electrifying your fleet vehicles, installing public EV chargers for the city, purchasing electric buses, and adopting reach codes. This year alone, we have over $300,000 in funding available to the City of Capitola. So since 3CE started in 2018, nearly 7,000 customers have benefited from our programs, putting more than $11 million back into the Central Coast. Over $4 million of that funding went directly to underserved communities. This slide highlights how Capitola has taken advantage of 3CE's programs to date. Your community alone has received over $414,000 in funding through these programs. A large portion of that supported the purchase of an electric street sweeper for the city. The remaining funds came from our other member agency programs, as well as our programs for your constituents, like the Electrify Your Ride and Electrify Your Home programs for vehicle and household electrification. And just for context, I've included statistics from a benchmark jurisdiction. So you can see that the city and your constituents are really taking advantage of what 3CE has to offer. And I'm also really excited to share that 3CE recently opened an office just five minutes from here at 2601 Porter Street. We are so excited to be deepening our connections here in Santa Cruz. And we invite you and members of the public to come by and say hello. And before I close, I just wanted to provide a brief legislative update. The federal mega bill, known as HR1 or the Big Beautiful Bill Act, does have impacts on 3CE customers. The bill eliminates tax credits for electric vehicles after September 30th and for home energy upgrades after December 31st. 3CE customers often stack the rebates we provide with these federal incentives. So we're really trying to encourage our customers to electrify their homes and vehicles now while they can still take advantage of both 3CE's programs and the federal incentives before they go away. HR1 also eliminates tax credits for utility-scale solar and wind projects that have not broken ground by the end of 2026. These projects are cheaper and faster to build than the natural gas alternative. So these projects going away will likely increase rates for our customers. To address this, 3CE is supporting the Pathways Initiative. Pathways would create a regional energy market that would include California and other Western states. This would allow us to sell the excess renewable energy we have during the day and reduce emissions across the entire Western region. It would save Californians nearly $800 million per year. And the final thing I want to end on is that we're also looking at resource adequacy trading as another issue we will likely address with legislation next year that could help lower costs for our customers. I know I only had eight minutes, so that's all I have for you today. Thank you so much for your time this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. That was a great presentation. Any council questions?
No, I just want to say it was a great report and I learned so much. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, council member.
Thank you again.
Thank you so much. Have a great rest of your meeting.
Bring us to number four, report on closed session.
Good evening, council members and community. There is no reportable action in closed session.
Thank you. Number five, additional materials.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we did have additional materials on tonight's agenda. For item 8C, one email was received after publication of the agenda packet. For item 8I, one email was received. HA, one email was received. 9A, one email was received. For item 9D, we had some people withdraw from the boards and commissions application process. And we also had one late addition. And so staff distributed an updated report after publication of the agenda packet. And then for item 9E, three emails were received after publication of the agenda. All items are available to the City Council before tonight's meeting and available to the public for public review.
Thank you, Madam Clark. Item six, oral communications by members of the public. You will have three minutes to speak, and if you'd state your name, please. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm just giving my son a second to come up here. I'll go ahead and get started. My name is Tricia Wiltshire, and I am the Campaign Manager for County Park Friends. And I just wanted to stop by and say thank you so much for working with the community to build Treasure Cove. And I know we're moving forward with big steps. And I just, as a mother, as a community member, I can't thank you enough. It is hard to believe, but two years ago, we were voting to move forward. And today, like, like, starting the project, right? And today, we're moving forward to put shovels in the ground very shortly. That is completely unheard of. I know of projects from other communities that have been on the books for 15 years. And that really has to do with the quality of everybody that pitched in. Our community, our organization, you guys, staff, our amazing volunteer, Dan Hayfley, and all the others. I always know I'm going to forget to say thank you, but I just want to say thank you, even if I didn't mention you. But really, I know government gets a bad rap. I know there's bureaucracy. I know we get frustrated when we're going through certain things. But I have to say, I am just so grateful that we have a local community that supports my family and families like mine. And that means the world to us. And so just thank you so much. My son would like to round out with a few comments. I'm going to try and transfer this. Oh, can we do it that way? Are you good?
Good evening. My name is Oliver Potts. I'm the O in Leo's Haven. My sisters Lauren and Evelyn are the L in the E. I'm a teenager now, but when I was three years old, my family worked with a lot of people to build Leo's Haven. And it's really, really popular. Now we're building one here. I want to thank everyone who donated money to build this playground. I want to also say a special thanks to you, the council, and the city staff for making this happen. Thank you for making the playgrounds for kids like me. We have so much fun playing with our friends on them. I look forward to seeing you all out there, all out at Treasure, out there at Treasure Cove next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. My name's Linda Smith. My name's Linda Smith. And I sent a detailed email to council last week, but I want to give a public shout-out to our PD. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. After nine years of living here, a neighbor of mine was reluctant to call the Capitola PD about an individual who was trying to make entrance to a house across the street. The gentleman was stumbling around a bit, possibly under the influence, his middle state not known. When contacted, he claimed to be a friend of the owner, with permission to sleep in his garage. It didn't seem to deter him any when he was contacted that the owner wasn't in the residence at this time. My neighbor was concerned, and she called me. After watching the guy for several minutes and trying but being unable to reach the owner, I contacted the non-emergency dispatch number of Capitola PD and requested assistance. I believe that we all have a duty to be diligent in our neighborhoods and keep an eye on our neighbor's property when they're not around. We in Capitola have a resource that is amazing. As neighbors, we can't help everyone, and few of us are trained in dealing with strangers under the influence or to even recognize mental health issues. The Capitola PD is a resource that is trained and does care about helping those in need while assuring we have safe and peaceful neighborhoods. I want people to know that our PD are not the macho aggressive law enforcement officers that we see on TV and so often hear about in the news. Over the 20 years I've lived here, I've witnessed encounters where different CPD officers have handled variable situations, criminal, mental, and small infractions. In all those cases, I've been proud of the calmness, the restraint, the teamwork, and the compassion that they've exhibited. This shows a consistency in policy and training that comes from the top of the department and from city leadership that endures with officer selection and promotions over time. In this instance, Officer Camacho and Sergeant Yun treated the gentleman with respect and compassion. I watched the entire encounter from my second-floor windows and was impressed with their teamwork and non-threatening demeanor. The gentleman in question exhibited body language that relaxed as the encounter progressed. The courts have recently limited the ability of our officers to offer a ride to services. But in the end, this gentleman left in the direction of their services. Officer Camacho and Sergeant Yun stayed for a bit. I'm assuming to help ensure that the gentleman left the area not to return, as he had a few times earlier. I want to publicly thank our city leaders, Chief Ryan, City Manager Goldstein, Mayor Clark, and you city council members for your support and leadership. I sent a cellphone photo of the guy to the owner of the house, and he confirmed he did not know the man. He was very grateful for the intervention and support of the Capitola PD in protecting his property and has increased confidence in the safety of his family when visiting his home on Prospect. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Dorothy Anton. I emailed you folks earlier this week. I would like to talk about pedestrian and bicycle safety along Bay Avenue corridor. I know you folks have long-term plans in place. But we've come up with some short-term, hopefully inexpensive approaches to making pedestrians and bikers more visible along the corridor. More visible police was our first item of discussion. I've been crossing the street a lot more since I have a dog, and I have had encounters with vehicles. But I am convinced, had there been a police car or an officer visible on that corner, would not have taken place. Cars trying to outrun me to enter the un-lane of traffic would be one instance of that. The other is pedestrian and bike visibility. A lot of communities have instituted red flags on four-corner intersections where pedestrians can pick up the flag and drop it in a bucket when they get to the other side, just to increase their visibility to other cars in the area. We need to repaint the lines and the crosswalks along Bay Avenue, particularly the Capitola and Bay Avenue intersection. There is no color coding for the bike lanes in that area. And I'm really concerned about the kids riding their bikes once school starts up in a few weeks. The other thing I would love to see there is stanchions along the bike lanes so the kids are protected from cars. I've watched too many cars drive into those lanes. We would like pedestrian crossings away from the intersections. Right now, people are jaywalking at the points that are natural crossing points. When you cross the, those points, you're making eye contact with only one car coming at you. You cross to the middle, and you've got eye contact with someone else. When you cross at Capitola, you could have up to five cars that you need to make eye contact with to cross safely. Lighting is another issue. We walked out there the other night. There is one overhead light on one corner. The rest of the corners are pitch dark. Finally, I think if we can put in those pedestrian crossings and ultimately enhance them with flashing lights and maybe even a speed table, as there is on Clare Street, that would be wonderful. Basic traffic lights that could easily be installed and taken down if we decide that they're not needed. The kind that are used when there is a failure of the roadway and a road is reduced to one direction, alternating. They can't be that difficult to install. It's certainly not millions of dollars, and they're temporary. They put them up while the traffic is, the road is being worked on, and they take them down afterwards. Certainly, to try that short term, that might even improve the traffic flow through the area. I know there are long-term plans in place that's years out, and we need something now. We've already had another resident hit by a car. I cross that street, I feel like I'm playing Russian roulette. And many people that I speak to when I'm going through the area feel exactly the same way. Thank you for your attention. I know you work very hard on this. I know this has been an ongoing issue. But we would really appreciate anything you can do right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Gina Tamkins. And I'm also from Bay Avenue Senior Apartments. And my neighbor, because my O, got hit on June, July 3rd. And he was critically, critically, critically wounded. And because they are my neighbors, we were involved, very involved, to help. And so we decided, after this accident, that we are not going to cross over there anymore. Not at Gales and not at Nab Hill, because it's just super, super, super dangerous. And people are getting killed or they're getting hit. And it's a little community. We are in Capitola. Capitola is beautiful. The village is gorgeous. It's very European. I love it. I've lived here a long time. And we can't cross over. We're like prisoners. To cross over to go to the village or to go to the bank or to go to Nab Hill Shopping Center, we take our life in our hands. And so I decided with Dorothy to come to City Council and talk to you as residents and as human beings, talking to you as elected officials and appointed officials and you are human beings. And I want you to understand that we are seniors, and we walk a little slower. And we want you to take us really seriously, because it's a very dangerous thing. One lady had been killed a couple of years ago, and my neighbor just got hit very badly. So as Dorothy was talking, we need serious help. And we want to bring awareness to City Hall. So there are three points that I would like to emphasize that Dorothy already talked about. And that is police presence. I would like to see a police car and a policeman giving tickets to drivers who are going against the rules. I would like to see siren lights going at both intersections, at Gales and Capitola and Nab Hill. I'd like that for three months.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up.
Oh, okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's the most important one, the police. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Carrie Howard. I'm a Capitola resident up on Burlingame Avenue. And first, I just want to say thank you to all of you for your service for Capitola. It's an amazing place to live. And I echo these two women that just spoke about the concerns with the traffic on Bay Avenue. It was, there's just been a noticeable decline in the traffic flow and safety. And while I recognize the intent to put in that current design is to improve safety and reduce the speeds, the real-world consequences have been quite different. Since the installation, we've seen an increase of traffic congestion during all hours, a rise in aggressive driving and road rage incidents. More drivers are dangerously using the right and left-hand turn lanes, as well as the parking lots to bypass the traffic. There's frequent confusion and unsafe merges due to the poorly marked and non-intuitive layout. Just trying to get to the main points here. I urge the council to pause at this point and really reconsider around about and really reconsider around about at the Bay-Hill intersection before allocating funds or moving ahead with this construction. I think they need to go back and look, survey the local residents and the daily commuters who use that part to understand the true impact of possible changes. The second thing would be to reevaluate alternative safety measures, which some of the ladies before me spoke, increased signage, targeted enforcement, and improved lighting, and review data from the previous configuration, the original one that was there, to see what structural changes should be made. Effective traffic design must balance safety and usability and should be informed not only by engineering models but by lived community experience. I respectfully ask that you delay any final decision tonight on the roundabout until an inclusive review process can take place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Clark Cochran. I am a resident and a homeowner here, and I have a couple of things I want to mention. First is that I guess I was surprised that local decisions that affect our lives here in Capitola are being made by non-residents. We need to make sure that that stops. All committee members, commission members, obviously council, those need to be residents. And you have the ability to change that, and it needs to be done. And in fact, the recent decision to put a fence along the Park Avenue bluff is a good example of that. The deciding vote was made by a non-resident who was appointed by a non-resident. So that decision should be rescinded by you. You should make the decision yourselves after talking to local residents and those who walk the bluff. In fact, the location of the fence in the first place doesn't make much sense. The kids are just going to jump over it. I mean, maybe the RTC had a hand in deciding where it was, and if that case, it's suspect to begin with. So anyway, need to look into that, and we need to make sure the decisions are being made by Capitolans for Capitolans. Second is the Stockton Avenue Bridge. Recent engineering study that was made on, the structural study that was done on that, I'd like that information to be made public as soon as possible, someplace where we can see what's going on. Really need transparency to what's going on. Hopefully, the report comes back that it's in good enough shape, that it puts an end to the city staff pushing so hard to get it torn down. But if there are issues, let the public know what's going on. Maybe have a town hall meeting to let us know. But we should be informed with what's happening so that we can help and know what's happening in our own city because after all, it is our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening. My name is James Ealing Whitman. You know, it's my understanding the city of Capitola only has a population of 8,000. I tell you, the city of Santa Cruz has a population of 67, and the county has a population of 270. You almost never see as many community members that are here. So I'm not quite sure what to say. I don't want to step on too many people's shoes. I don't know how many people know that the country of China produces a coal-fired power plant less than every seven days. That's how they supply the garbage. I'm talking about the green energy stuff, the solar panels, the wind, that the United States is eating up thinking it's the best thing. It's really not. People should do their research. In order to recycle the garbage solar panels, silver has to be worth between $200 and $250 an ounce. Currently, it's right under 39. So as far as the consent agenda items, I would like to talk about, excuse me, the consent agenda is eight. Number D, the military weapons use. Number E, the conflict of interest. And number eight, the coastal rail trail. So starting with the conflict of interest, there's not a whole lot of information in there. But people in this community voted for you folks, but you're under the control of a city manager. Only thing worse than that is having a city council member that has that training as well. There's some information how corporate cities have been taken over since 1915, and the people you guys voted for are under the yoke of unelected internationally controlled individuals. Some would call it treason. I could clearly describe many ways that it is. How much time do I have? Minute and 16 seconds. So the coastal rail trail. I mean, I'm just going to read it, part of it, on page 87 in the larger binder. It's easier to see with glasses. "Future design considerations with anticipated implementation of a zero emissions passenger rail." Maybe I'll just kind of go off subject. I was at a really fun patio watering hole in Santa Cruz, and a gentleman was telling me that he works for Joby, and they're developing these one- or two-person helicopters to transport people over the hill to Raphine Oxide Valley or to San Francisco, and that they are electric. And as soon as he said that it's being sponsored by Toyota, I actually said, "You're just lying to me." And the reason I said that is Toyota is not interested in the electric only at all, as many companies are not, because they're developing an internal combustion engine that works on water. Last time I checked, 3/4 of the planet was covered by water. 12 seconds. There's a sports car in Germany, 3/4 of a million dollars, and 30 gallons of seawater. It goes over 600 miles. And there's no storage, there's no danger. It's directly replacing it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you all for being council members with so much to take into consideration. I'm Terri Thomas, a Park Avenue resident. Two things. First, on June 12th, the City Council meeting Traffic Calming Final Solution for Park Avenue were put on the consent calendar. They felt they didn't belong there and sent someone an email since we were out of town. Instead of being moved to a public hearing as suggested, the item was moved to the end of the meeting then passed, which did nothing to address the situation. Rather than appeal it for $600, I would like to point out it is the residential area of driveways along the street between McCormick and 600 Park Avenue Apartments that need traffic to calm down, especially now that Park Avenue has become a detour to Highway 1 for who knows how long. So I suggest that you amend the consent approval by moving the speed feedback sign along the bluff where there are no driveways up to where it can do some good in the residential area. And please, put more 25 mile an hour speed limit signs along the street as well. If the police department can't patrol the street more often to dissuade speeders, then I strongly suggest that you put two speed bumps in the queue for budget consideration, which would also slow traffic down in the residential area. Second, at last week's planning commission meeting, there were only three commissioners present to vote. As appointees, do they also have to comply with the requirement they live in Capitola? If so, and they don't, is their passing of the RTC Bluff Fence Project legitimate? I believe this issue should be clarified and dealt with before appointing any more new planning commission members. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Goran Kopic. I live two, three miles away from here. I used to play basketball at JC Park, but I'm injured at the moment. A car tried to hit me in Capitola intentionally here. That's not my main point that I am coming here for, to talk to you guys about. It's about an issue that was going on many years ago here. It was illegal distribution of cocaine by a business here in Capitola Village. I talked about this issue with Police Chief Andrew Dally back then, and he understood what I was talking about then. And I was mentioning certain names, and he knew exactly who they were. So I want to caution you that things like that happen here in the city of Capitola. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. John Nolan, I'm a resident here. I'm here to talk about the Bay Avenue, I don't know. The corridor, Bay Avenue corridor. That is a mess. I see people doing all sorts of things to try and get around it. They turn into the parking lot of Nob Hill. They take the loop. They do all kinds of crazy stuff. Now I'm hearing about a roundabout, and I just want to come here to tell you I'd like to see it go back to the way it was. I've been here a long time, and it was working fine before. Now it feels like a runaway train. I don't know. Yeah, I'm not the only one. Everyone I've spoken to in my community has said the same thing. It's crazy. So if the whole object was to slow down the traffic, were you doing that? It's backed up all the way to the off-ramp. Please reconsider, especially that roundabout. I've seen those, and I've been in them, and they're just a mess. This isn't going to help the situation in any. Please think about us, the neighborhood. We have a real, I'm in Riverside Terrace neighborhood of Nob Hill. Getting out of that, that street there is just almost impossible. You got to, well, what we do is go into the middle lane and kind of work our way through. Please reconsider what you're doing. It'd be really nice to go back to the way it was. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Stephen DuKl. I live at 750 Bay Avenue. Okay, you probably don't want to. How about that? Okay, I'd like to talk about the intersection of Capitola and Bay. I see that that intersection was created in about the 1860s. Today, there are 11 lanes going into two streets that are attached at about a 30-degree angle. Lane of sight is terrible. You cannot see pedestrians. It's impossible. The crosswalks are 90 feet long. That's a long crosswalk. I suggest a correction. I think it might be able to be done where you create a line, Capital Avenue, so that it hits Bay at a 90-degree angle on both sides. I realize that the timeline is such that doing this may involve eminent domain, readjusting right-of-way lines, but it can be done faster if the city would like it to be done. The owner of the fruit stand is receptive to a request for a temporary easement. I don't know about the bank side, but the pathway for a reroute is there just for the asking, I believe. A change order to an existing contract, don't advertise, that sort of thing, can be initiated quickly. Treat it as a maintenance job. No CEQA, no air quality clearance. Do it right away. In my view, you can get that done in six weeks. You can have lanes at 90 degrees that is normal in a traffic situation like that with lines of sight to protect the pedestrians, 45-foot maximum length on the crosswalks. So, so much better. I want to move on to Hill Street. Hill and Bay are in a commercial area, totally inappropriate for a roundabout. But we won't go there. Let's talk about today. Today, not two years from now, as newspapers say.
Thank you, sir.
Not a time, okay? Well, let you go with that. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. Mayor Joe Clark and Vice Mayor Morgan and the council members Jensen Orbach and Susan Wiseman. My name, my name is Amalia Chase, and this is my very first public speech in this country, in fact. And I'm very nervous and I'm talking. I just would like to voice my opinion regarding the meeting last July 17 regarding the 13,000-feet fence over by Pacific Avenue Bluff Cliff area. My son died last February 20, I mean, last February 16. He was found down below the stairs where the campsite. And just, I heard, you know, in the media that few neighbors are against it, and they're planning to appeal it. And I would just like to voice my opinion that the area is very dangerous. I walk there twice a week. I live 15 minutes from the area. Takes me 15-minute walk. You know, I frequent the area, and it's very dangerous. And it should be secured, you know, whatever the fence or just, you know, for future, whatever intentional or accidental death, you know, a fence of any kind can at least stop. You know, because last year I heard there's a death there that it rolled, he accidentally rolled down the cliff. And I'm not sure my son's death is debatable, you know, because they said it's a suicide, but who knows? You know, either way, I can't get him back. So I hope they'll look into it more, you know, because I know it was decided that it's not full of the five commissioners approved it. And that's about, I think, it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. Taking a pause from the trend of all the presentations, I do want to bring it to the commission and the city's attention that despite all the ongoing activity, in two months, we will be having the Capitola Beach Festival. And with our people planning it, we're working on it. And we're looking forward to having a fun weekend. Part of that involves, of course, the electric parade that we run down the lagoon and have for the citizens. I'd like to bring up two points on that. Number one is we are looking for more members to build floats. The people that do participate find it's a great, fun time to get together and be creative and do something that they can show to the community. We are looking at some new awards this year, potentially for neighborhoods and small businesses and so on to spur some competition with the event. Right now, we have five floats, and we are looking for more. But additionally, on Saturday morning, Joe Palladreni, who's fortunately leading the charge, has put together and with the city's assistance at the courtyard on Kennedy on Saturday morning, starting at 7:30, we're going to rebuild those floats so that the people won't fall off of them when they're going down the lagoon. And so any volunteers that feel like they need to exercise their right arm or do some drilling or something like that, we'd be glad to have them get up early in the morning on Saturday, come down the courtyard and help us out with what's going on. So thank you very much, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for letting us be able to speak, and thank you, council, and Mayor Clark for the opportunity to be here. I wanted, so my name is Craig Curtis. I'm a resident here in Capitola for 39 years. And I live on Oshburn next to the New Brighton Middle School. And from my, well, first of all, I always keep safety first, and I look forward to act to encourage others to act safely. And so from my vantage point... And so from my vantage point, I can actually see six other homes. And it took me many years, I came to city council, because I see so many close calls with the children. It was a grammar school initially and now it's a middle school. But, and I don't have children, but I care about everybody else's children. And it took me years to get a stop sign at Washburn and McCormick, which has been there, took me about 15 years to do so. And it's been great. It prevents, you know, naturally for cars to stop. But the way, with no sidewalks between the New Brighton Middle School gymnasium going to Park Avenue, which is one of the sidewalks that's being proposed right now. I really want to, I hope and I really encourage the city of Capitola to consider making that an expedite a really high priority over, you know, there's, I know there's many other sidewalks on the proposal. But as it is, every day, because we don't have the buses that we used to have, what I used to see when I was here in the early years. Now it's not, you know, the parents have to drop their kids off and then come in the afternoon and pick them up. And there's many, many kids that, when the cars park in front of my home, which is, which is great, I understand they have to be there. But then the kids that don't have their parents right there with their vehicles in front of my home, they actually walk out into the roadway. And so they're on the driver's side of the vehicles. And I tell you, I see so many close calls. And all I, I really just, I mean, you can, it just needs to be dressed and put curbs and sidewalks. I had the opportunity in August of 2029, when I was out in my front yard, and I saw two people with clipboards. And, and so, you know, I say hi to everybody. And so I asked them kindly, may I ask what you're doing with the clipboards? And what are you doing? And they said, oh, we're the principal and it was the vice-principal of New Brighton. And I voiced the concern about sidewalks then. But anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Oh, thank you. You can hear me okay? My name's Bob Hickman. I'm a resident. Actually, I'm Craig's neighbor and I will reiterate everything he says. It's really a dangerous situation. When they're coming to pick up the kids or drop them off, you got a line of cars all the way up and down that street and the kids having to walk around the cars that are parked and in between the cars lined up. So everything Craig says, I fully agree with him. My next thing I want to talk about was the Park Avenue bluffs. I was here at the city planning commission. I spoke up at that meeting and I want to speak up again, just make a couple comments. I think it's named, but Matthew Howard, he made a really good comment there. Can't we reach out to the RTC and try and come to some sort of agreement on how we can do this fencing so that it works for everybody? I've walked those bluffs all the time. I realize the trail's getting real close to the end there. I don't think the fence needs to go back as far as what they're saying. I think they can adjust it. I think there's an appeal coming before the city council. If none of you have ever walked those bluffs, please go out, walk them before you take a look at that appeal. Reach out to the RTC, see if they're working to get some more community input on this. My other understanding, the RTC is taking full control of this. Okay, fine, if we can't get them to work with us, then maybe you need to step up and enforce them to do the weed abatement program. The apartments across the street, the HOAs used to chip in and have the HOA fees, you know, collecting their members and send people out there to do weed abatement across the cliffs there. Because that really, the wind's blowing that way. A fire starts there and if you walk out there, there's a lot of weed. That's going to blow right into all those sections. The RTC sent a cease and desist letter saying they will take care of it. How are they taking care of it? Once a year, I see goats out there. That's not enough. I love the idea of the goats. I think that's a great idea, but once a year is not enough. Something needs to be done more. So hopefully, we can work with them when it comes up on the appeal that we can, like I said, I encourage all of you, please get out there, walk, get some more community involvement. The signage that was up there for the permit applications, two locations that I could find. One on Park Avenue by the bench, you know, the bench that's up on Park Avenue, the nice bench. And the other one was on the entrance of Grove Lane, but it's over on the Park Avenue side. About yay high off the ground, little tiny sign. You're not going to see it unless you're looking for it. So a lot of the community members had no notification that this was coming up for a vote. Weeks I found out about it last minute. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Welcome.
I also live at 750 Bay Avenue. And I spent many times coming to the grocery store. And cars will get on the, while I'm on the crosswalk, will come up right behind me. It's, it's turning to death to where I want, I don't want to come up there anymore. And if this elder, elder lives at my apartment, I will walk up there and then hit his walk-in. Be a lookout. I hope we could find essential lessons for this. If I could see one dead or rear, we move pretty slow. And we need things to protect us. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Please forgive me, guys, I have a tickle in my throat tonight. So I must have written, what, Jamie, 20 emails about the Bay-Capitola intersection saying someone was going to get hit, a senior, in fact, exactly how they got hit? You can ask them. Easily 20 over the years, probably more. Crosswalks are diagonal, they're too long. I could get into this, but just read the emails. Enforcement does not work. We don't have enough police officers. Even if we did, it wouldn't work. Signage does not work. The only thing that works is design. Self-enforcing design is how we control this problem. And guys, it's roundabouts. They are not flow interrupted. They solve so many problems. So build the roundabouts. But that's not what I'm here to talk about tonight. I, oh, I had, I had one second, please. I brought the wrong folder. Can you believe it? Well, I guess I'll just talk about other stuff. So the roundabout thing is one problem. The other problem is, and I'm not going to say silly stuff like my feelings or facts and other nonsense right now, but we have bad actors in our community. And I know this for a fact. Like I know these people are bad actors and they're doing bad things. And there's no way to stop some of them. Some of them are just, they're weirdos. They're odd lads. And there's nothing we can do. But some of them are elected officials and we can stop them. And they have violated the things like the Bayne Act and the First Amendment and the Fourteenth Amendment. And I would love if we could pull item, is it 8C? From the consent agenda? I would love to talk about that more freely. I think it'd be good for everyone if we were just accountable, transparent, and inclusive. Those are really the three pillars of government. You can throw in fiscal solvency if you want to, but that's looser. Ah, I might actually do my three minutes tonight, huh? A rarity. So I think I'd like to end with. You get my idea, folks? Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. My name's Ron Hacks. I also live at 750 Bay Avenue and I want to talk about the corridor issues. Four points. I've been there for about four years. It moved, traffic moved a lot better when we had all four lanes open before they shut it down to those two lanes. Now it does cause extreme backup and it takes 20 minutes to get to the freeway from 750 Bay Avenue. A lot of people do go around, they go through the parking lots and things like that. What y'all put up was inadequate and insufficient and really misses the point. Putting up crossroads with a pedestrian-activated button to start the flash, flashing lights at Hill Avenue would be a good thing. A woman was killed last year trying to get across there. The problem was she was coming down the crossroad lane from the post office and trying to cross over to the Nob Hill. At that point, did not walk down Hill Avenue and she was struck and killed there. I've also seen people coming out of Bay Avenue trying to cross at, before the Capitola intersection. They tried to cross to get over to Oak, which is directly across from the Bay Avenue Apartments. If we had a crosswalk there they could activate, that would relieve a lot of the issue there. People just will not walk a half a block or so to get to a crosswalk when what they want is right across the street. So that's causing an issue. The other issue, intersection of Capitola and Bay, like they say, it comes across at a strange angle. A four-way stop is inadequate there. I think a flash, a stoplight at that intersection that was responsive to traffic would be a better choice. Would give a, be safer. Also, crosswalk signs that are activated by pedestrians at that intersection would also be a good idea. If you could put up a crosswalk across, you know where a crossroad lane is or comes out of the post office there? On the Bay Avenue, when blocked up or half-blocked up from Hill? A crosswalk there would save lives as well. That's really about it, except I also see people cutting through Nob Hill and going around traffic and driving aggressively and causing problems. But if some, if lights were there that were traffic-activated instead of on a timer, you know, so they respond to the occasional traffic coming downhill or the occasional, the lesser traffic from Capitola across Bay, you know, giving no priority to the Bay Avenue traffic. You'd reduce a lot of the traffic. You would be more responsive to traffic than the pedestrian needs for crossing from intersections. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Mayor Lynn Garrett, your responsibility is to provide for the general well-being of the community. And we've heard a lot of excellent suggestions tonight regarding traffic that I hope you take to heart. Other endangerments to the community come from a number of sources. I'm looking at your consent agenda, item 8D, recommended action, adopt a resolution renewing chapter 2.6 of the Capitola Municipal Code entitled Military Equipment Use Ordinance, Capitola Military Equipment Use Policy. And approving of, personally, from what I've read of the military over the years, I do not believe military has a place in our local governments. We have police to provide for the safety. I'm also horrified reading about what the military and National Guard are doing in the Gestapo ice roundups in LA where they're kidnapping people and disappearing them to other countries with no criminal record of those they're picking up. I think that should be on the regular agenda for broader discussion. This is very serious. The other endangerment I want to bring up has to do with the lithium battery fires. The first time I saw the January 16 Moss Landing fire was driving on Park Avenue towards the freeway and looking across the bay. And we are threatened with these fires in our community. I'm going to read from stock dangerous lithium-based battery energy storage system planned near Dominican Hospital, Aptos High School near me, Minto Road, Watsonville. Why? Uncontrollable fires, explosions, toxic smoke, poison gases, over 100 toxic chemicals released, according to a scientist, toxic ash contaminating, farmlands, water, homeschools, parks, hundreds of people sickened. Go to neveragainmosslanding.org or stop lithium-based and approved.org.
Thank you, ma'am.
Call the board supervisors 454-2200. Thank you.
We are over allotted 30 minutes of a public comment, but it looks like there's just a couple more, so we'll continue.
Good evening. I'm fairly new in the area, about seven months new. And as a pedestrian walking, I have a concern for our safety. And hearing that there was a brutality about a year ago and also about July 2nd, around there, at the corner of Capitola and Bay, there was an incident where a resident, where I live in the community, had to be airlifted. We don't know how he's doing at this point. We hope he's doing well and he will recover. But, so this is how I go out for my walk now. I'm bright. Okay? And I'm really hoping that these colors say, see me, see me, see me. Okay? Well, I was wearing these colors, either it's see me or I'm a moving target. And I felt like I was a moving target when I was crossing the street, coming up from Bay Avenue, going over to Galeside, let's say. I was doing my walk. And I'm about halfway across the street and I notice a vehicle right next to me had already crossed the street and was more than halfway. And I was about eight steps away from the curb. And as I took each step, this car was creeping up to the point where I felt if I had a cane, I could tap it, I could touch it. Or, you know, I just felt it was so close, I could have jumped on its hood. And it wouldn't stop. It didn't stop. It just kept creeping up as I got closer to the curb to get up. So I walked here tonight and I really had a dread about crossing the street. Even though I'm as bright as I am, I feel like I need to be waving flags or something. Red flags. And say stop. But I really, really would appreciate whatever, whatever can be done. I wrote this little thing here and I'm just going to read it. "I implore you to be the guardians over the pedestrians of Capitola in this area to decide what would be in the best interest for our welfare and safety. Do what's in your power, authority to protect us, please. Thank you."
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. My name is Eve Marie McGrath and I've lived at 812 Lawrence Avenue for 30 years and I currently live at 750 Bay Avenue for the last two years. And I really have seen some very close calls. I've been watching for bicycles. And in six months, I've counted five bicycles. While I've been, not been there full-time, but there's been times that I've been sitting in the shade in my car watching. And there's a whole bicycle lane that's being used that could be used for vehicles. And the behaviors that I've seen, once or twice, in extreme conditions, I myself have driven through the Nob Hill parking lot, being careful as I did it. But I have seen many people who didn't, who weren't careful. I've seen a lot of road rage happening over the one lane being backed up past the freeway and people not being able to move forward at times, even when the light is green. I really believe that as far as the roundabout is concerned, that it would create more chaos, not solve problems. And some of the suggestions, like shortening the crosswalk, might be really great, but obviously are going to take a lot of work. I do think that having a light- Um, I do think that having a lighted crosswalk up by Gales would really help a lot. But I really think that the fact that the bridge is closed, that there's so much traffic going on, all of this happened at a time when there's great, great pressure on the system and we've gotten to see it. And I'm really surprised that it hasn't been a lot worse. But I don't think that it's going to get better with time. I think we're going to continue to have an increase in traffic and I really think that we need our tuned lanes back for traffic and we do need more lighted crosswalks. I don't know if a stoplight at near Gales is really appropriate yet. I really like the idea of a traffic-activated light. And then I'm going to switch to something else, which is the Vistra fire. I myself was dealing with a problem with someone who did $100,000 worth of damage to my parents' boat in Monterey and left to go work at another place in Moss Landing. And unfortunately, I myself was in Moss Landing on the day of the Vistra fire, not understanding that it was a chemical fire. And I have suffered greatly. Uh, I had to quit swimming. I've been coughing up mucus since January 16th.
Thank you. Time is up.
Thank you, Mayor Clark and council members. Dan, I just want to echo what Tricia Realtyre and Oliver Potts said earlier. It was September 2023 that we began the campaign to raise funds for Treasure Cove at Jade Street Park. And I want to congratulate your staff and thank your staff for the excellent news that's contained in items 81 and 8J, which is the CDBG grant. That's the last piece to make this whole. We'll have a complete playground where a child of any ability, any level of disability will be able to have at least one element, if not more, that they can relate to and play with in that park. Nobody will be left behind. And that's thanks again to your staff, your city manager, city public works director, and your assistant city manager and their colleagues have done an excellent job. And we're very proud to be part of this and we look forward to the groundbreaking. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. See, no further public comment. We will get on to staff comments.
Staff has just a few comments. One, I think Director Hurley, he was going to make the announcement about the CDBG grant. In addition, I just want to note that on your consent calendar this evening, there was a recommendation to continue the rail trail update into a meeting in August or September. We have heard from the RTC and the county that August 28th would be the date for that update.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just quickly, I think it is now public knowledge that we were awarded the $3.6 million for the CDBG grant. The majority of that goes to the Treasure Cove project and then as well, there's $300,000 that will be split between Gray Bears and Second Harvest, so helping provide food to, for those in need. So, really exciting and that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you for the great news. Council comments, I'll start on this end.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, it's been a nice summer here, uh, with, uh, missing a meeting in July, but I've been attending a lot of, uh, the concerts out of summer and they seem very well attended down in the Astronaut Park, which is great to see. Great, um, Jeweling Panel, uh, a week, two weeks ago, um, was just an amazing event. Totally, I think, highlighted Capitol like as a community, you know, um, coming together and people coming off the beach and seeing it. So I think the next one is, uh, end of August on 24th, something like that. I encourage everybody to come out for that. Um, also, um, been working with the Castlewood Mobile Estates and helping with some communication issues over there. Uh, myself and Mayor Joe Clark were there yesterday trying to help, uh, with some communication related issues with, um, some of the issues that they're having with the park and the RTC. Um, and just a point of comment, um, I have to recuse myself from Bay Avenue discussions and stuff, um, because of my proximity to that. But one thing I thought maybe we could look at, um, just as an idea about overall things, sometimes some of these ideas come forward. I know it might be information, um, if we could develop some sort of a, um, a statement of facts about something about crossing areas and like, are you allowed to have a flashing stoplight and stuff like that? And I'm not talking just on Bay Avenue, but in normal intersections. Um, I think our public works director has educated us a lot on, um, as a planning commissioner, I have been, and also as a council member, and some of those facts are good to, I think, have out, um, to the community as people try to brainstorm and give ideas to our council. So that's all I have and thank you.
Hi, good av- good evening, everyone. Um, I just want to say that there's a ribbon cutting for, um, the Shandakere Bicycle and Pedestrian Overcrossing, AKA the Whale Bridge, and the Highway 1 auxiliary, auxiliary lane from 41st Avenue to SoCal Drive on, um, July 30th from 5:30 to 7:00. Everyone is invited to join. While we celebrate the completion of this amazing, amazing project, we need to collectively recognize that it's only one of the many steps in the right direction and that our work to improve bicycle infrastructure countywide is far from over. Santa Cruz County ranks second in California for bicycle crashes, according to the Community Traffic Safety Coalition. We need a network of active transportation connections with protected bike lanes separating cars from bicycles and pedestrians so people are safer while choosing a greener way to live. From a public health standpoint, these accidents, deaths, injuries are preventable, as many of you have stated, uh, with the accidents along Bay Avenue. We need to seriously prioritize the health, safety, and well-being of our communities by proactive, proactively invest, investing in infrastructure projects like the roundabouts on Bay and all segments of the Costa Rail Trail. While I understand that the roundabout project will take a long time, I think the estimate is five years, I do think it's reasonable for us considering all of your comments tonight. And I hear you and I thank you for coming out to speak to us. Obviously, summer tourism and the junior guards commute are impacting the local traffic and the safety for all of you. Um, I also am experiencing that Bay Avenue traffic. And I think it's worth revisiting to see if there are additional safety measures that we can take. Um, I also want to give kudos to our staff, to the friends at the county park for the project and, um, just getting this grant. It's amazing that we can complete a project to be so inclusive, to be, um, uh, to be such an asset for our community and our community members. Um, I also want to point out that, um, I understand, and I've talked to, um, the Second Harvest Executive Director, and she had told me recently that she, they received a federal, uh, mandate that they can no longer feed undocumented people in the county. And that's more than 50% of the people who, who they, who they service. So this $300,000 grant that we are able to provide to Gray Bears and Second Harvest is so important for our community. So thank you for getting in.
Thank you. I thought it was, uh, I had on my list tonight to talk to my fellow council members to see if we could put the Bay Avenue corridor back on our agenda for another meeting because we heard from people tonight. And also, I think we've all gotten a lot of emails and a lot of comments from people. So, um, I am officially going to request that we put, um, Bay Avenue back on, on our agenda. I personally would like to see it happen sometime, maybe the end of September, first part of October, when school's back in session, because I think we've all become aware that, um, you know, we've had summer traffic and now we're going to have school traffic and we need a little time to gather some information because we do want to make our decision based on some facts. You know, we, we hear from pedestrians, it's a problem. We hear from drivers, it's a problem. And, um, I think we need to, uh, reexamine this and look at it. I, I don't even know if we want to have a special meeting because I think that, um, this discussion's going to take quite a while. Uh, we want to get some facts, as Councilmember Jensen suggested, out to the community about what's legal and what's not legal when you can put up crossing flashing lights. Um, so, um, I would like to request that the council agendize this for some time in the end of September, first part of October. Um, so that's really my, my main comment tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for showing up and voicing your concerns. I'm happy to see the amount of attendees this evening. Um, just a couple of things, um, while we're short on meetings these few months, we're not short on events. Um, this last Sunday, I visited the Maker's Market, which was, this time held out on the Wharf. I think it was a great success. I think it really brought people out there to see all the great work we've done to our wonderful Wharf. So, kudos to Parks and Recreation. Um, this Sunday is our annual Wharf to Wharf. How it will look is a little different than it has in recent years. Um, but just a reminder, streets will be closed. There'll be a lot of, um, extra humans around. So, since we're on the topic of safety, let's be safe. Um, I, I'm in agreeance. I think that, um, we need to compile some evidence so that we already know about what we're working with, with Bay Avenue corridor. Um, I'm sure people that are just sort of becoming invested in this, um, opportunity of change would really benefit from understanding the work that we've already done as a council to, to get to this point that is very frustrating for a lot of people. And so I want people to be aware of why decisions have been made, um, the way that they've been made, based on facts that have been presented to council and staff from, um, really esteemed traffic studies and individuals that work with small cities like us all the time. So, um, if it's something we need to be revisited so that we can really maybe pinpoint some smaller areas for us to focus on in the interim of our long-term plan, um, I would be totally in support of doing that. Um, and I think that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. I'd like to say that one of the issues with this traffic problem, it's not just Bay Hill or that quarter, it's everywhere in Capitola. I mean, it's, it's countywide. But what we need, need to work on is to educate people. We can't control how people drive, but maybe we can help correct them with enforcement. So I'd like to see some enforcement step up on that. Um, but really, uh, people's driving habits, when they get frustrated, they drive worse, they take risks. We just have to make sure that we do all we can to, um, keep it safe for everybody. So, on that note, let's all get out and enjoy what we live in Capitola. It's right in the middle of summer, the swing of summer. So get out there and enjoy the beach and all this good stuff that we're doing here in Capitola. Thank you.
Oh, I was going to add, this is the one thing I was going to add. Tuesday, August 8th, I believe, is National Night Out and it starts at 5:00 PM. And it is going to be held at Esplanade Park this year, which is a switch-up for us, but it's a really great event. Oh, the 5th, I'm sorry. August 5th, so in a couple of weeks, Tuesday night. Um, it's a really great event. Lots of different public agencies are be there, our wonderful police department, fire, paramedics. It's a really great family event, so I encourage everybody to come out. Thanks.
Free food.
Free burgers and dogs. Yeah. Oh, okay. I'm going to stop talking now.
We're stepping it up a little bit.
Sweet.
It's always a great event. All right, that brings us to item 8, consent items.
I'd like to move consent items 8A to 8K.
I have a couple items I'd like to see pulled from the consent calendar. Um, I'd like to see us pull, um, item E, um, move that to the end of the agenda. And I would also like to see us, um, and I, I don't know if I need to pull this one or if, um, probably item J, but it's really for a, a minor change, um, in, in our contract with the contractor.
Would you, would you like to just address it now so we can?
Uh, yeah. My concern with item J is simply that, um, normally in, uh, when we have construction management contracts and, uh, personally, I think construction managers are great because they usually pay for themselves and, um, you know, move a project along more speedily. I'm accustomed to the construction manager, uh, coming to the city council at least like once a quarter and giving us an update. I mean, this is over a $10 million project and I think it would be appropriate for, you know, maybe once a quarter for the council to receive an update on how the project's proceeding and what's going on. And, um, you know, I look forward to hearing about it. And so I would like to see his contract amended to require a quarterly report during the construction time.
Looking at staff, could we do that and still continue with approving the item?
We, one of the things, we already have plans for quarterly updates on the community center in these projects, whether we do it with in-house staff or with the consulting staff, was that, is that, is that of a significant enough issue? Whether we do it with our in-house staff or whether it's done with the consulting staff? I was going to leave that decision to the public works team to whether, how they do the updates to council.
Well, personally, I would like to see the construction manager come. Uh, it's quite a substantial amount that they're, we're paying them and I'm fine to let it go if you can assure me that the staff will invite the construction manager to be part of that team.
Yeah, we can certainly bring the construction manager as part of the team if that would be helpful.
That would take care of it for me.
Great. And why don't we just look at item E now?
Um, well, for me, item E is, is a little more complicated, but I would like to see us not require the financial advisory committee, uh, to be added to the list of people that need to file conflict of interest. For me, uh, conflict of interest, the people who should be doing that are people who have final decision-making authority. And, um, the financial advisory committee is an advisory committee to the council. They don't make any final decisions. And over the years, we've had a terrible time recruiting qualified people to sit on the financial advisory committee because to be effective, you really do need to have some financial expertise and knowledge, uh, to, to contribute to that group. And, uh, most of the people I've talked to who have that kind of financial knowledge are really not interested in doing things like that in the city where they have to go through the process of, you know, filling out the, uh, Form 700 and, um, listing all of their, uh, financial interests. So I don't see that adding them, uh, is a gain for the city. I see it as being a loss for the city.
Other council members thoughts?
Yeah, um, I, you know, from my understanding, also, I've heard that the FAC have, members of the FAC have directly requested to look for, look at, look into every contract that the city has, um, with the different contractors. And if they're looking at individual contracts, isn't that, isn't there a potential for, for a conflict of interest? Or is that not their scope of practice to look at the individual contracts? Can you answer that question?
Um, you want meetings? Go ahead.
So historically, the finance advisory committee has operated at a bit higher level, has, you know, made decisions, made recommendations to the city council about maybe how surpluses could be invested, balancing between investing in current projects versus reducing debt, things like that. This most recent year, Councilmember Arboc is correct, the finance advisory committee wanted to look at all of the contracts, the hundreds of contracts that the city enters into individually. And that was part of the impetus for recommending that they be added to the Form 700 list. And if they, for transparency purposes, if people are looking at every contract and making specific recommendations about it, that level of detail may warrant sort of financial disclosures. I guess the other approach certainly could be to move back to our traditional practice and making that more clear, potentially in our bylaw update that we're going to be working on for the boards and commissions, to make it clear that the finance advisory committee is operating at a, at a policy level and providing recommendations to the council and not dealing with sort of operational details like that.
Great. Then can we, as we look into that, see if there could be some variation or if it should be uniformly across the board? If we could look into that?
Are you suggesting whether, who files Form 700s? And so I think the Art and Cultural Commission do have specific roles in spending city funds or s- prescribed in the art ordinance, so I think they are, they will be Form 700 filers. I don't believe the Commission on the Environment is, I believe the Planning Commission is by statute, and Museum maybe as well.
They are.
So that would be the one, I think, outlier then.
So do we want to remove the FAC from the filing of Form 700 and then just be clear in the bylaws as to what the expectations are of that group?
I think that approach certainly works. Either approach would work.
I'd be happy with that because it sounds like, you know, as the advisory board, they should really focus on policy and not the nitty-gritty of the details of contracts, just like how we heard you as our city manager were not into the nitty-gritty of your staff and what they do on a day-to-day basis.
So I believe that we could make a motion to approve--
Mr. Mayor, speak into the microphone.
Can we just approve the consent calendar with the modification that the FAC not be included in item E?
Yes, that would be the motion. Sounds like you just made a motion.
I don't want to supersede Melinda's motion, but--
Oh, that's great. We have a motion on the table.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes?
So now we move the consent agendas, or items, right? A to D and F to K.
So with that being said, I know we've been going quite long. I think we're gonna take a three-minute recess.
No, wait, we have not. We have not approved the consent items. I need a second for the rest of the consent items.
Did we approve all of them or were you just--
We approved all the consent calendar with one minor modification.
Yeah, for the record, we have a motion and a second. And that'll bring us to general governance, but before that, we need to take a three-minute break. Thank you, everyone. We'll get through it. Great, that brings us to item 9, general government.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll just jump right in. Thank you so much. This is a brief, happy item about our community grant program here in the City of Capitola. So I'm gonna start with a brief overview.
We have some--
Quiet, please.
Thank you, please. We're trying to get on with business. Thank you, please.
Okay, so on the screen here is outlined-- Thank you, Mayor. We're really looking for decisions from council on three main points. They're just outlined here. I'm hoping that you can provide some direction on the upcoming grant program, including if you would like to adjust the term length. Secondly, consider if you'd like any grant priorities for the use of our ECYP, Early Childhood and Youth Programming Funds. And then lastly, appoint council members to a subcommittee that will review grant applications and prepare a funding recommendation to be brought to the whole council. So a little bit of overview, what has the city prepared in the budget? So here is an overview not only of restricted funding, intended grant funding, but also all the many ways that the city does help with social services, including, as our Director of Community and Economic Development mentioned earlier, $280,000 from the Community Development Block Grant. I'm always proud when I get that acronym right, CDVG, grant funding, which, as mentioned, goes to Second Harvest Food Bank and Greybearers. We have our Early Childhood and Youth Programming, $60,000 there programmed in. And our Housing Action Partnership comes in at just about $40,000, including the $125 that you indicated towards our grant program. So moving along, what did council do last time? So in last year's budget, you know, we did, you did fund social services. This is broken out slightly differently, just kind of more on audience or those served. So this includes restricted funding and general fund, but shows that youth and children are a part of that total pie. I think this is called a donut chart, which happens to me with my favorite food. Seniors and then community care kind of incorporates, you know, how different organizations really help all aspects of our community, including have with the unhoused services. And if you have questions, please just jump in, but that gives you an overview. So additionally, the last time council discussed their community grants program, many things were determined. Three grant priorities were identified, housing, health and wellness, and the environment. A three-year term was landed upon, and there were two specific grant types, operational and outcome grants. Operational were $7,000 and less to an organization, and then anything $7,500 and more was considered an outcome grant and was supposed to be for something more specific that the organization wanted to achieve rather than day-to-day operating costs. So the community grants are broken out annually with a similar funding each time. So this was how those grants were broken out after a subcommittee review and then city council approval the fall of, I believe, 2022. So most of the grants went to those that had self-identified as a health and wellness grant, some went to housing, and then just a few for the environment, based on the applications that were received. So again, like I mentioned, we have a few different items for council to discuss and hopefully provide feedback on. It's outlined here in italics is what has been done in past cycles. You're not beholden to that, it's really up to council. So a term length, as mentioned, we had settled on three years. Before that, it was a two-year cycle. Any reporting requirements council would like? In the past, a verbal report once per that grant cycle, so once in the three-year term for only outcome grant recipients. You've noticed those happen at the beginning of council meetings throughout the last three years. If you would like to keep the grant priorities, they're listed there on the screen. And then additionally, how would you like to use the Early Childhood and Youth Programming restricted funding? A recommendation from staff is to allocate $15,000 of that to the city's scholarship program for children and youths to receive scholarships to participate in our recreation programming. In the past, there was no additional priority. The council felt that the ECYP was restricted enough to just children and youth serving organizations. So I'm gonna pause, that's a lot. This is really kind of designed to be a way to get some direction from you, and I'm here to answer any questions. I think there's one more slide with the outline. So tonight, looking for the feedback, appointments to subcommittee. In August, the city will post the notice of funding available. That's a NOFA. You'll hear people say NOFA, that's what it means. And an application period for our potential grant recipients. We'll have the subcommittee review applications and direct staff make an initial recommendation, and we'll bring that recommendation to the full council in October to allow enough time for those first funding allocations to go out before the end of the year. So we can go back one, perfect, thank you. And please, I'm available for any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Council questions?
No questions at this time.
Great, I have none either. That'll bring us to public comment. Great, see nothing. We will move on to council deliberation and a decision.
Can we go back to your list so I can go through with my comments and I won't forget anything? First is, I'll talk about the length of term length. For me, I would like to see a two-year cycle rather than a three-year cycle. And my reasoning for doing the two-year cycle is I think then that coordinates with elections and new council members being elected and being able to be involved in this important funding process that the city goes through. So if we did a two-year cycle where we are right now, the people who were elected last November can participate, and then after 2026, the people who are elected, you know, can participate in that process. I would, I think it's great to have the community groups come and make a presentation to the council. You know, I think it can be limited to a five-minute, but I think it's nice to hear what they're doing, what's going on in our community. They're usually quite positive, and we get a lot of negatives, so I like that positive coming too. For me, the grant priorities, we have funding set aside for early childhood and youth. As far as that funding is concerned, I think it would be nice to see as much of that funding as possible provide new programs within our city through our recreation department and provide more scholarships for the residents of Capitola to be able to use those programs. We keep talking about the additional housing that's going to be coming into town, and we need to provide programs that are gonna accommodate those families, particularly trying to find programs in the summertime when some of the other options available for particularly younger children won't be available during that time. And I would be interested in serving on the council's subcommittee, but I'll just put that out there now. So those are my comments.
Well, thank you.
Yes, I like those comments. I wasn't too sure about the cycle, so if we're all in agreeance on two years, that's fine with me. I definitely would like to see the reporting come back to council. If it's two years, are we doing it once a year right now or once a term?
Once a term. Right now, it's once in the three years.
Okay. Then, yeah, then I think once in the two years would be fine. The priorities to me, I mean, I was part of this before, so I still support that. And, yeah, I think there's opportunity. I mean, we've already addressed this, I think, with the fours and fives. Maybe we can have some programs that are more oriented towards population that doesn't have as much going on. So, yeah, those are my thoughts. Thanks.
Yeah, agreement with both. I like the two-year term limit on the grants, and then I think the reporting back is really an important aspect of that. And that's all the comments I have about the community grants.
Two or three years. I'm fine with whatever everyone agrees with, but I understand that the previous council decided on three years because it was less onerous to have that NOFA process and have to have all the organizations apply and get together, you know, in a subcommittee to decide. But I also hear you, Susan, in terms of, you know, wanting, having the new councils have the opportunity to decide where they want to see the priorities. And in light of so much going on with the federal cuts to programs, it's that landscape of funding is really, really challenging for many organizations right now. So it can change so quickly, within a matter of months. So I'm fine with the two-year term as well. With that said, I agree with the staff report that we should not designate fixed percentages to each of the, you know, categories just to maintain flexibility. And then, you know, in terms of the ECYP funds, I've talked a lot about how there's a gap in need for younger children, younger preschool-age, four- to five-year-old kids with universal TK transitioning in California, and how it's so difficult for them to find care in the summer. So I am open to having a process to, I don't know if it's RFP or what, but to see if there are interests in developing some type of program in Capitola to serve our residents. I wish there was more money because I also think it's so important to support the organizations we have supported in the past, like the Boys and Girls Club and Big Brothers and Big Sisters. So I'm glad I get to decide. Hopefully, you guys will put me in the subcommittee because I'm really interesting. I'm really interested in seeing where we can designate the funds.
Great, looks like we have our two members for the subcommittee. Grateful for that. I'm in agreement with just about all of them, and I think we met all the requirements of this.
I believe so. Can I just clarify? So I'm hearing consensus that there would be some mention of a priority to preschool-age, four- and five-year-old programming within the ECYP grant. Okay, wonderful.
I'm just not sure how much we're distributing.
Of course. The subcommittee can review everything.
Open, right.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Hopefully, the subcommittee will be able to give us some direction on that, so that's awesome. Moving on to item--
We can do it.
Moving on to item B was, has been removed.
I'll make a motion to continue item B to the August 28th city council meeting.
A second.
Yes. So do we have council comment on that? See none. Public comment on the post moment? See none?
See none, I can remake my motion to continue this item to the August 28th meeting. And my second needs to--
Second again. A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Brings us to the Capitola Village and Wharf Business Improvement Area Advisory Committee.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, for your consideration, staff is recommending adopting bylaws for the Capitola Village Wharf Business Improvement Area Advisory Committee. Give me just a moment here to pull up the slide so that you guys can see what we're discussing. So as some background for this item, back in May of 2005, the city formed the Capitola Village and Wharf Business Improvement Area and appointed an initial advisory committee. The purpose of this group is outlined in the Streets and Highways Code through the formation of the CBW BIA. The purpose of the group is to review and recommend a budget for the business improvement area and advise the city council regarding matters relating to the assessments. Section 36530 of the California Streets and Highways Code requires the city council to appoint members to this advisory committee. Most, all of our city council advisory committees have bylaws. This group does not, so staff is recommending adopting a resolution approving bylaws for this body with initial composition of three members. So when we wrote the staff report and published it in the agenda, we had only received two applications. And so as a workaround, staff suggested creating a three-member body so that decisions could be made, and appointing two members of the public, as we had two applications on file, and appointing one member of our planning commission or a finance advisory committee that was non-conflicted. However, yesterday afternoon, staff received a third application. So tonight, for your consideration and discussion, staff proposes that the council give direction on the composition of this group. We could appoint three members as we have three applications on file, or we could appoint two members and balance it out with another member of our existing advisory body composition. It is important to note that the member must be non-conflicted, and so in this case, whoever is appointed to this group cannot also serve on the BIA advisory, or I'm sorry, the BIA Board separate from the advisory committee. And so that's the discussion for this evening. And so the recommendation, as I stated before, is to adopt a resolution approving bylaws, and I am open to any questions, and I seek your direction on the composition of this group. Thank you.
Questions on this side?
No questions at this time.
Thank you.
I have no question about the bylaws. I'm just curious who the three applicants were and what positions they hold within our city.
So there are three business members in our community. We received an application from Daniel Castagnola, who owns a business at the village. We received an application from Ted Burke, who owns a business in the village. And then we received an application yesterday from Kathleen French, who also owns and operates a business in the village.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So do we now need to talk about the composition of the group? Do we want three members of the public? Do we want two members of the public and a member from either the planning commission and--
I would recommend, before moving to discussion, that we take public comment, and then, yes, I welcome to hear your thoughts.
Great. We will move to public comment. Welcome.
Anthony Cuahardo, Chair of the BIA. So this will be a temporary committee or advisory body for the year until we come up with a contract and formation with the city to a different code. So I would recommend you take the three applicants that have suggested to be there. Ted Burke's been with the community a long time, understands the marketing efforts that we put through, same as Daniel Castagnola and Kathleen French as a newer business owner with some great ideas. This is a marketing budget. The longer we push this off, we won't be able to get the assessment done and push our marketing efforts for the fall and the winter. So I would suggest we keep the three. Probably going to meet twice or three times a year. Some of them already have knowledge of how the budget works and what we use efforts for. And then, like I said, this is going to be a temporary for this year only. And then we're working with the city manager to, for the formation for the 94 code or 89, but coming up with a standard contract moving forward. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Thank you. See no further comment, we will take it back to council deliberation. And your question again?
The three applicants work fine for me. I agree.
I agree. Just a question. The comments made in balance of the year, so is that until end of the calendar year?
So the adoption before, or the resolution before you this evening proposes a term of two years. And so this would allow the advisory group, two years to continue on in their current formation, if within that two-year period, the advisory, I'm sorry, the CBW BIA transitions to a different type of body, then the, there would be another resolution before you to dissolve the advisory committee formally.
So it's two years, and it's not just the calendar year that might have been mentioned?
It would be, so it's proposed to terminate the terms two years from June, it would be June 30th, 2027.
And I have no problems with the applicants.
I will make a motion to appoint the three applicants to the advisory body for the CBW BIA.
So just to be clear, we are adopting a resolution right now, but the next item will be appointing. But right now, we're just looking for a motion to adopt the bylaws that outline the composition.
Okay. Why don't I go ahead and make a motion to adopt the bylaws for the Capitola Village and Wharf Business Improvement Area Advisory Committee? I second that.
Lovely.
Have a first and a second.
Just to clarify, that's with the three members of the public, which is?
Well, I was getting there.
Is that going to be a separate motion?
No, I think we've got it.
Great. It'll be both. We have a first, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you so much. And so our next item this evening is still me, and we are talking about advisory bodies again. This time, we're talking about other advisory bodies besides the CBW, in addition to, I should say, the CBW BIA advisory committee. And so let me share my screen. Appointments to city advisory bodies. For background, tonight, we are requesting appointment of the members of the public to the Capitola Village and Wharf Business Improvement Area Advisory Committee and the Historical Museum Board. In addition, we have a vacancy on the city's planning commission. In accordance with our municipal code, staff recommends that Councilmember Jensen make an appointment of a member of the public to this group. For background, members of the public are appointed to serve involuntary capacity on the city's advisory bodies for terms, some of which expired in June 2025, and some of which became vacant due to an appointment to the city council. Applications for membership are accepted all the time and remain on file for one year. Members who have term expirations are notified before the end of their term expiration, so they have a chance to reapply if they are interested. We just adopted bylaws for the CBW BIA advisory committee. So staff recommends that the council appoint by motion and vote members of the public to the group. We just adopted bylaws that state we will take three members, and we have three applications on file, and the terms will expire in two years at the end of June 2027. Staff also recommends appointments to the Historical Museum Board. There are four terms which expired in June of this year. Staff has four applications on file for this group. The bylaws of the museum board outline that the museum board will provide recommendations. And so for this evening, the museum board has recommended the appointment or reappointment of Enrique Dolma, Gordon Van Ziden, and Kami Corvin. Finally, the planning commission is up for this evening. When Councilmember Westman was appointed to the city council, it created an unscheduled vacancy on this group. The term for the position will expire in December of 2026, and it will be Councilmember Jensen's appointment. And so with our municipal code, Councilmember Jensen will just select his appointment to this group. No motion or vote is needed. We do have nine applications on file for this group. When we initially published the staff report last week, we had a couple extra, and, or we had one extra that withdrew his application. And so we are left with the nine on the screen. So staff's recommendation this evening is to appoint by motion and vote three members of the public to the CBW BIA advisory committee, and members of the public to the Historical Museum Board. And Councilmember Jensen can appoint a member to the planning commission. I'm available for any questions.
One question I brought up about a conflict I'm having with serving on the senior council, and would that be something that we could look at tonight also for, to see if another council member would be able to pick it up because I have a conflict?
That's, that's, that is scheduled to be on the agenda later this evening.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Oh, it's set that's separate. Your guys' appointments are special and unique, and we'll talk about them separately.
I apologize.
That's okay. Any other questions?
See no further questions, we'll open it up to public comment. See no public comment, we will open it up to council deliberation and a decision.
I'm happy to pull up the names again if you guys need them.
I am curious, Julia. I know there were a few more people who applied for that museum board, like Narendra Dev and Helene Norshad. Why are they not on the list?
Narendra Dev withdrew his application from the museum board. He's currently on the list for the planning commission, and I think he just decided to focus his attention there. Can't say with certainty, there's no reason required for withdrawal. And then Helene Norshad is on the list. However, like I stated, the Historical Museum Board bylaws allow them to provide a recommendation to the city council about who they'd like appointed. And so I provided their recommendation for the three people listed.
So even though they had the recommendation, we can still appoint people if we wanted? Because it looks like there's four people, four vacancies, and they only recommended three.
That's correct.
So we can still appoint if we want it?
Sure.
Thanks.
Did we close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing.
Okay. So seems like we need to make a motion. We'll sort of go through the groups at one time. I would like to make a motion to appoint the three applicants to the Capitola Village and Wharf Business Improvement Association Advisory Committee. What a title. And I believe that's Ted Burke.
Daniel Castagnola. And Kathleen French.
And then I would like to make a motion to appoint the three people recommended by the Historical Museum Board. And then it's up to Councilmember Jensen to make his appointment for the planning commission.
Great. So the motion, I'm just going to restate it, so it's all on the record. Councilmember Westman has threaded a motion to appoint Daniel Castagnola, Ted Burke, Kathleen French to the CBW BIA advisory committee for a term expiring in June of 2027, and appointing Enrique Dolma, Gordon Van Ziden, and Kami Corvin to the Historical Museum Board of Trustees for a term expiring June of 2028. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that leaves our planning commission appointment.
Thank you. First of all, I personally thank Susan Westman for serving as the planning commissioner. It was, you did an amazing job helping us through some difficult times with our housing, especially, and I appreciate the two years that we served together on the planning commission. So thank you for that. Yeah. With that, I appreciate all the applicants that turned in their applications for the planning commission. At this time, I'm going to appoint TJ Welsh. He has served on planning commission in the past, and I also have verified his residency at the same time. And so at this time, I'll be appointing TJ Welsh.
Well, I was on the planning commission with Mr. Welsh, and I thought he did an excellent job when we worked together there a few years ago. So I think you'll be a fine appointment as well.
I would agree. And do we need a motion on this?
So for that one, we don't need a motion. It's Councilmember Jensen's appointment. And so we are all set to move on to the next item whenever you're ready.
Bring us to item E, administrative policy 1 through 42, code of conduct.
I'll be leading us through this one this evening, to mayor members of the council. So first off, I want to make it clear that we don't have any proposed changes for the code of conduct. This is your policy for yourself. At this point, we have identified a few potential things you may want to look at. In addition, when council members have discussed, talking about this, they brought up a few topics to look at. So there's no draft changes. If we get direction this evening, staff would take that direction, work with the city's attorney's office, come up with a markup changed copy and bring it back to the council for approval. So back in 2019, the council requested staff develop a code of conduct, and they appointed a subcommittee to help guide the preparation of that code. About a year later, we brought it back to the city council. Subcommittee brought it back and recommended approval, and that became policy I 42, 142, City Council and Board Code of Conduct. Next slide, please. So then this spring, this was included as a goal for the council to take a look at the code of conduct and review it, update it. Since the code of conduct has been updated, staff has identified one section at least, maybe just a couple more that may benefit from some clarification. And in addition, the council, as we've talked about this code of conduct, have mentioned looking into residency requirements, other general law cities, and whether that's something to take a look at, and about the complaint process. Next slide, please. The change that staff has identified is in the code of conduct. We talk about city stationery and just saying it may not be used to promote personal interests. There has been a few little hiccups that have come up around city letterhead, and staff would propose a minor modification to that section that just says that city's letterhead may only be used for official city business. Stationery is a little bit more flexible in how it could be used. We have researched how other general law cities, for those of you who are unfamiliar, I'm sure council is well aware, cities are either general law or charter cities. Four cities in this county are split evenly down the middle. Scotts Valley and Capitola are general law. Santa Cruz and Watsonville are charter cities. Charter cities can write some of their own rules in a way that general law cities cannot. General law cities are often subject to state law. So we did some research into how other general law cities practice verifying residency for candidates in council, and the practice that we currently follow, which is verifying voter registration ID and an affidavit when candidates declare for council, is the practice that's supported by case law and the practice by the vast, practice employed in the vast majority of other general law cities. On the complaint process, I've heard from council members, we heard, I think, at the last meeting, Councilmember Westman talked a little bit about clarifying some of the steps in the complaint process. I think staff has also identified potential issues about making it clear that the complaint process is geared towards council conduct and is not geared towards council decision-making. So for example, this code of conduct isn't around a way to challenge a council decision. There are other avenues for that, but really it's about council's behavior, conduct. And that, I think, yeah, that's all in the complaint process. So the recommendation this evening is to review the administrative policy and provide staff with any changes you'd like to see. And then we would come back, work with the city attorney's office, and bring it back to you for review and final approval. With that, I'm available for questions.
I actually have a question for the city attorney, if I can. So could you just go through so the public is aware? This is a city policy that's been adopted. It's not an ordinance. And could you sort of clarify the difference between something being a policy and something being an ordinance?
Sure. In terms of its impact, there's not really a difference between a policy adopted by resolution, which I assume this was adopted by resolution, no, well, regardless, a policy adopted by the council versus an ordinance or a resolution in terms of how it affects the council. The difference is really the subject of the code of conduct. It's, as the city manager said, it's a mechanism for the council to police themselves. We are staff. We report to you. So we cannot enforce the code of conduct against you, our bosses. You enforce it against each other. And so these codes of conduct in cities or counties are really sort of rules that you decide on for each other, and then you hold each other accountable, or you don't. Either way, it's your choice about how to kind of regulate each other. And so we do the best we can in bringing something to the council. And then the council makes your own decision about how you wish to apply it and to execute it. Did I answer your question? I'm not sure I did.
Right. I just wanted to, like, the code of conduct is not a law.
Correct.
The code of conduct is a policy.
Correct. It's sort of guidelines, really. Because there is, an enforcement mechanism is difficult because you are council members, you report to the public. And so if you do something that the public truly believes is a violation of the code of conduct, we, staff, cannot enforce that. And you can't even enforce, you can't remove a fellow council member. So it's, they are guidelines, yes. Whereas in ordinance, there might be a remedy that the public could bring if it's violated. So for instance, if the council violates an ordinance, the public, a member of the public could perhaps bring a writ, asking a court to direct you to follow your own rules. But this is, maybe that's the difference that.
Yeah. There's nothing in this that actually requires someone on the council to sign this.
Oh, absolutely. Again, you, this is to the council, absolutely.
Thank you. I just wanted those clarifications.
I have no questions at this time.
I just want to clarify that the item on the agenda is just talking about the document of the code of conduct in and of itself, and not about specific complaints that have been filed. Is that correct, Sam?
Yes, that's correct.
Great, thanks.
See no other council questions, we'll bring it to public comment. Welcome.
I looked over the code of conduct, the recommendations and stuff, and the one thing that I, seems to me that is missing from this code of conduct, and we can attribute it potentially in the interest of transparency, open government, and awareness by the public, we can attribute, and perhaps we can attribute it to lack of knowledge, is I think there should be a requirement within your code of conduct that basically states that if you enact a legal transaction in the state of California that affects your status, that it be noted and made available to the public. Okay? Whether that's purchasing a business within the city of Capitola, whether it's purchasing a property that you're, on the loan document, you say is your primary residence outside of the city of Capitola, whatever that happens to be, and my recommendation would be to work with the, the city attorney to have her, work up a document to educate the city council members so that they understand when they sign one of these documents, that they're affecting their openness and their transparency, and potentially their status on the city council and to the citizens of Capitola. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Clark and council members.
Good evening, Mayor Clark and council members. My name's Kevin Maguire. So I kind of thought that the code of conduct was kind of part of when you take the oath of office, so maybe you're not signing something, but it kind of seems like it might be governed when you get elected and you take the oath to serve the citizens of the city of Capitola. But I'm speaking tonight as a longtime resident and a community member. And I want to bring attention to recent violations of the city, city council's own code of conduct by Councilmember Orbach on April 17th and on June 26th. According to Section 5.4, council members must not use abusive conduct, personal charges, verbal attacks against members of the public. Section 724 also reminds us that all dissenting views should be expressed with tact and civility. Unfortunately, recent comments made from the dais have caused harassment, stress, real reputational harm to individuals, including myself. This goes against the spirit of trust, transparency, respectful leadership that Capitola has always stood for. I'm asking the council to adopt a formal accountability process, something many other California cities already have. First, allowing complaints to be submitted clearly through the city clerk, attorney, or other outside ethic advisors. Second, outline a clear path for investigation and define real consequences like censor, removal from committees and boards, making appointments, or mandatory training. Third, empower the mayor, city manager, city attorney, or the city clerk to immediately stop slanderous or abusive remarks during meetings. That's the basic protection we owe the public. Putting that council member on a timeout or excusing them for the night. Fourth, a city conflict resource. I also want to recognize that our city attorney, Samantha Zutler, she brings a deep experience in municipal law, including Ethics for Public Officials, the Brown Act, conflict of interest issues. She trains elected officials across California on best practices in ethical governance. Her insight should play a central role in helping Capitola shape stronger accountability policies. I also suggest annual ethic trainings for all council members and a renewed commitment to the code of conduct at the start of each term, building these processes and standards for accountability if violations happen in the future so the council can act swiftly and not be complacent or complicit. This isn't about political sides and personal conflicts. It's about maintaining council integrity and protecting our community from abuse of power. I want to thank you for your time and your service. And I'm happy to support any effort to strengthen these standards moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. See, no further public comment. We'll bring it back for deliberation. Start on this end.
Yes, do we have an outline of what the policy is at this time? That we can look at from the steps?
It was included in the agenda packet. I can pull it up on the screen. Would that work? The policy was included in the agenda packet. I can pull it up on the screen if that would work for the council. Is there a particular section?
Just like what the process is as stated in the, as it's now. And then also just a question to the city manager. The code of conduct policy was brought in, what year? How long ago has it been?
2020, I believe it was adopted.
I think it was September 10th, 2020.
2020, okay, thank you. Yeah, so I think it's great that we have a code of conduct policy in the city. I think there might be a little bit of refinement that I'd like to work with my council members on, maybe to clarify the process a little bit. I'd be interested to hear their thoughts. But I think in a systematic way, I think one thing is some notification that a complaint came in, and then what steps that we could all agree to that they be followed or clarified. And then also making sure at the end of that process, whatever that is that we come to agreement on, that there's some closure to it in a follow-up letter, either it's not going to be heard, or what stances were taken just for a closure period. But I'd be interested just to see what other council members think about the policy as it written now, and then what we can do to enhance it, to make it a little bit better. This does seem like there is some questions that the community has, and also I think I've heard from staff about some clarifying things.
I agree. In reading the code of conduct, especially under sections 8.4.2, yeah, right there, that last paragraph, you know, it's really kind of open-ended, right? It says, "The council may order an investigation." But it, I think we really need, one, to clarify requiring a majority of council to trigger a hearing. We cannot receive, we can't possibly have a public hearing for every complaint that comes through. There's got to be a way to legitimize whether it's truly a complaint or not. So I suggest that we, as a council, have a majority to decide when that trigger is implemented. Secondly, there's no, like Councilmember Jensen says, there's no way to kind of achieve resolution. I'd like to see language added to say that after 30 or 45 days of receipt of the complaint, you know, once it's forwarded to the council to decide, that we have that period of time to either have the majority support to hear it in a public hearing, or it be dismissed. And if it's dismissed, right back to the person who filed the complaint, that it's been dismissed. And that should be the end of it. What else did I have to say? And I agree that this really should be about behavior, and it should not be about how we vote on policy issues, because I can see this being weaponized by political opponents or residents who disagree with the way you vote. And I, I think that's all my comments for now. I'd like to hear from my fellow council members.
Okay. Well, I do have some comments. And my goal in my comments is that I think we do want to simplify this process. I do think in some parts of it, you know, while we want to be as transparent as possible, I do think there's some sections of it need to be confidential, because when someone makes an accusation about someone, for example, you know, Fred Smith tortures his dogs or, you know, is cruel to animals, if those are made public and there's really no validity to them, they seem to stick around even when they're not credible. So I think we need to have, have a process that allows some confidentiality and some transparency. And my process would be that I think when someone files a complaint, the complaint should go to the city attorney. I don't think the city manager should be involved in it. And my reasoning for that is that the city manager works for these five people up here. And I don't think it's appropriate for someone who is, is working for the council to be involved in this first stage. I also don't think it should go to the city clerk for reasons that it could involve other staff people in city hall, and I don't think that's a good idea. So my suggestion would be that the first step is someone files a complaint. The complaint goes to the city attorney. And I think we do need to put up on our website exactly how to communicate that to her, whether you're sending it in writing or, you know, electronically. And once it goes to the city attorney, the city attorney would have like 30 days to get a report to the city council on the legal stance of the complaint. The attorney wouldn't be deciding whether the complaint's valid or not. They would simply be providing a legal recommendation to the council. Once that legal recommendation came to all of the, all of the council members, and at that point, I think it could go to the city manager, because, you know, there's a possibility of some conflicts being resolved just on their own, that the council would have 45 days to review that complaint. And for me, I would say that it would take two council members to ask that it go on an agenda if the council wanted to discuss that complaint. And my reasons for two is I don't think one works because that easily can be weaponized between two council members who particularly didn't like each other. I don't think it needs to be three, because I don't think it needs to be a majority of the council. I think if two council members feel that this is a complaint that should be made public and discussed in an open meeting, that that should satisfy everyone. And if at the end of 45 days, two council members have not asked for this to come to a public agenda, then I agree. I think a letter should be sent to the person who filed the complaint and say, you know, this complaint was presented to the entire council. They have reviewed the material and they have indicated that they are not going to go forward with any investigation or any more concern with your complaint. I agree. I think that we're up here to talk about behavior. I think we need to be very careful that, you know, the complaints aren't weaponized for political purposes. This is really about how we interact with the public and, and what we say to them. Someone suggested that we include something that, you know, notice if a council member buys property or a business purchase. And I think that's actually covered, because if you buy a property or a business, whether it's in Capitola or anywhere else, you have to modify your Form 700 and report to the state, and that information is all public at that point, because anyone can go look at any council member's Form 700. It's my understanding, and I may need a little help on this, we do go through ethics training. I know I did it as a planning commissioner, and I believe I did it every two years as a planning commissioner. I, I thought that it was the same, that all council members have to complete ethics training. It's through the state of California. You know, it's done online, and you have to pass the test to get a certificate and continue to be a council member. So again, you know, I, I agree with the staff's change as far as stationary is concerned. I can't remember which other one you requested. But basically, I would like to, you know, simplify the process about who gets the original complaint. There's a time limit on its process, then there's a time limit for the council, and a closure to what's going on. So those are my comments for right now.
Just one question before, go to Councilmember Morgan. Just what was you proposing to council member? Was that rotational, or how would, what would that look like to you?
Well, the two council members who would ask to put it on an agenda could be any two council members.
Can I also clarify a question? I just want to know what the financial impact of this would be if all the complaints are going to our city attorney. I believe both the city attorney and our city manager are staff of, for us. They are both our staff. So the line of thinking that because Jamie is our staff, that he shouldn't get the complaint first, doesn't necessarily make sense, because Sam is also my, our staff.
Right. But the question is that our city attorney is going to provide us legal advice. They're not going to make a determination about whether or not the complaint is valid. All complaints will go, you know, to the city attorney, and they will evaluate that. And in looking at a lot of other cities' codes of conduct, I, I think that's routinely how it's done. And, and I'll say that in all honesty, I have a little bias in here, because I think you all know that I've worked in a number of cities where city managers have been terminated and gone in and tried to put those cities back together. And it's often been, not to say anything bad about Jamie, there have been problems with city managers becoming very close to certain council people and trying to protect them and do things that, that were not appropriate. So I think we want to avoid any of that ability to take place. As I said, once the city attorney goes through the complaint and provides legal advice, then the complaint will come to the, all the council members, the city manager and the city attorney.
Can I help? Maybe? I don't know if it'll be helpful. I'll do my best. Okay. Agree that, that both, as the manager and I, report to the council. I do think a good reason to shift the policy slightly, as you've suggested, is, I agree, not because I don't report to you, but because I do, but I agree that it is the role of the city attorney to evaluate, or it is a, an appropriate role for a city attorney to evaluate complaints that come in. Someone has to do it, right? And everyone in the city at some point reports to either the city manager or the council. And so someone has to do it. It makes sense for it to be the city attorney. What I think I could do is, as you pointed out, some of these complaints that come in aren't really about legal issues. Some are, some are not. When we drafted this language, we were sort of trying to get at that. And if a complaint, sometimes complaints, we have, I don't know that we've gotten any thus far, might trigger a legal obligation on behalf of the city. For instance, if we had a complaint that triggered an obligation under the Fair Employment and Housing Act for the city to perform an investigation, I, my office should certainly be the one advising council of that. Same with perhaps a whistleblowing complaint, anything alleging fraud. I mean, complaints that have a clear process that they trigger. If we get a complaint of a crime, I may not be the person to decide if a crime has been committed, but I could work with the police department and get advice from the police department about how to advise the council. If it's something that should be reported to the DA, I could advise the council about that. So I think what I could do is review the complaints, advise the council on any legal issues that are implicated by the complaints. And if no legal issues are implicated, I could tell you that. This is just a, this is up to the discretion of the council. I've reviewed it, thank you. I could do that in pretty short order. And then, to your point about confidentiality, my communications with the council will be confidential. The complaint will be a public record. My analysis of the complaint to the council will be confidential. And then obviously, anything from there, that, any action that the council takes will be a public record.
So who's responsible for, for writing back to the individual?
I could do that.
Okay. I just want to clarify that. Thanks.
So those are sort of, well, let Councilmember Morgan have her comments.
Well, yeah, I agree. I think this is a nice way to sort of be a little bit more well-rounded in the way that these processes occur. Thank you to our attorney for being willing to sort of put your neck out there. I definitely would like it to be a majority of the council, but if, if two is where we are sitting, I'm okay with that, just as long as it's two or more. And then, yep, definitely good on the stationary comment from earlier. Residency, I think we did kind of cover that. There's sort of, we kind of went through that with the appointment process of, you know, how far we're able to look into that. So yeah, I think we can figure out a way to collectively move forward on that.
We need to make a motion.
I'd like to comment first.
Yeah.
I agree it should be two or more council members to enact investigation. But I think to have a finding, it should be a majority.
Right.
And then frivolous complaints against a council member, I think, I was hoping that could be just, if we decide it's not valid, address it that way before it goes to a public hearing.
Right. It wouldn't go to a public hearing unless at least two council members said that they thought it should come to a public hearing.
Right, two or three.
And the last thing would be is, I'd like to have, at the end, the recommendations, just give us more direction on a written warning versus a verbal warning or censorship. just give us more direction on a written warning versus a verbal warning or censorship.
Are you suggesting maybe more levels? Because right now, I think it talks about three different types of findings, like dismissal.
Dismissal, as have it spelled out, dismissal.
Maybe having more levels, like dismissal, verbal warning.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that would be fine. So it's my understanding, we're not, we're just giving direction tonight and you're going to take this back and.
Yes, we'll take it back.
Bring it back to us so we can continue to talk about it.
Everyone comfortable with the direction so far?
I think the key difference is we've heard a couple of council members say two for a hearing, a couple of council members say three. So we'll bring it back and we'll have that as an option and council can make an ultimate decision when you can see the whole document in its full context.
Great. And just to item F.
Good evening again, mayor and city council members. Tonight, we are back to talk about advisory bodies once again. This time, city council representation on regional advisory bodies. So the city council represents the city of Capitola on various regional boards and committees. Tonight, we are recommending that the council review the existing appointments and let staff know if there are any changes that are desired. For background, like I said, our council members represent the city on several county boards and committees and multi-jurisdictional groups. Earlier this summer, staff received a request to review and change certain of these appointments. I have listed all of these appointments on the screen. You can try to make the font bigger if necessary. And so my recommendation would be that we take public comment questions and then if the council desires to make any changes, I'm available to do so.
Great. Council questions?
I do have one. When I was looking at the agenda and reading the agenda packet, I was like, wait, how did this get in, get on the agenda? And in talking to our city manager, he says this was an exception because typically it doesn't go on the agenda unless someone on the dais asks for it to be agendized. So I'd like for us to look at our agenda-setting procedures and compare that to other cities. Can you look at some options and bring it back to us, please?
Definitely.
Thank you.
Further questions? Seeing none, public comment. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council deliberation.
Yeah, I was the one who brought this forward just because I have a direct conflict with the senior counsel with the Monterey Air Resource District. And I would have conflicts, I can't make both the meetings. So we're not being represented correctly, I don't feel. And so I would like to reach out to other council members, see if they're available to help out on that one assignment that I took that I have a conflict on serving on.
And I talked to Councilmember Jensen and said I would be happy to do that. It's a meeting at Wednesday on 10:00. So my Wednesdays are about to get busy.
I actually would also like to have one of my fellow council members consider taking one of my commissions. I am on five boards and I'm the alternate for one. And I would love to see if anyone is interested in taking the AMBAG.
You want to ask me to do it?
Councilmember Westman, would you like to take AMBAG from me?
Yes, I'll take that for my other Wednesday afternoon.
Thank you.
I did want to mention I can't do it in August, but can start in September.
I'm happy to go to the August one. Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify, so which was the group, Councilmember Jensen, that you wished to swap?
The senior vice.
Advisory council on aging. Okay. Are there any others that need to be swapped around? So with these groups, typically they request a motion and a vote. Sometimes they request us to provide a copy of the minutes for these appointments. So I would ask to make the changes. Currently, we would be changing the advisory council on aging to Councilmember Westman and the Association of Monterey Bay Governments to Councilmember Westman and Vice Mayor Morgan. And so I would ask that we make a motion and a vote to make these appointments.
Do we need public comment first?
We took public comment and there was none.
A long night.
That's okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the swaps on the city council representation on our regional boards.
I second that.
A first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item G, Regional Transportation Improvement Program Grant.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council members. We have a grant opportunity coming up with the RTC and I'm going to bring a couple of projects for you to consider this evening. So the RTC is the Regional Transportation Improvement Grant. It's a consolidated call for projects, so there are many funding sources. So the RTC is what is considered the Regional Transportation Planning Agency for Santa Cruz County. So that's similar to the MTC in the Bay Area or TMC in Monterey County, where there is funding that is allocated per capita in other ways to the different agencies. And then those agencies provide call to projects as grant programs to distribute those funds. So the goals that the RTC have adopted for these funds are to enhance multimodal transportation, safety, equity, climate resilience, and infrastructure preservation through transportation programs. I will note that some of this transportation funding is restricted to transit agencies, so, and Santa Cruz County Metro, and that it is open also to the RTC itself and to other agencies such as community bridges that provide transportation services. The last round of funding, the city was awarded $1 million for our 41st Avenue multimodal improvement project. So one of the two projects staff is proposing to apply for is a sidewalk gap project. So specifically, there are 12 segments that were included in your agenda packet, which includes upgrading curb cuts, modifying driveways, some of which require retaining walls and removing ADA barriers within the city to provide a continuous sidewalk network. It reduces pedestrian vehicle conflicts because some areas don't have sidewalk at all, improves mobility for all users, and then also just encourages multimodal transportation. And really, next slide, this spans all areas in town. Next slide, please. For residents and businesses and our visitors. Some of these barriers are things like electrical poles within the right of way so we don't have enough clearance for a wheelchair to use. The lower left-hand pitcher is right next to J Street Park where there is a pathway, but it isn't all weather. It's not, I believe that's DG, so this would be constructing a formal concrete sidewalk. And then this area is that cut through near the mall where this slope that exists here is too steep for a current ADA standard, so to get people out of that neighborhood. And again, these are all the areas that are proposed across the city with an equity mind. Next slide, please. So these were selected via our general plan. There are some of these areas that are identified in our general plan and also our ADA inventory. We are lucky to have an intern in Public Works this summer who went through our entire ADA plan, of which our many, many, I want to say 2,000 pages worth of deficiencies in our right of way, and really picked out the things that were most effective, we're talking with our Public Works staff. And then community input from our E&amp;D TAC and our assistant from the Blind Friends to really see what would be most impactful for these communities of concern. And so these sidewalk areas were prioritized for, again, the greatest mobility benefit, but then also considering filling gaps to key destinations such as schools, the library, and shopping areas. And then also that these would be something that's deliverable within grant and budget limits. Again, it's about $13 million across the entire county and we expect to have a portion of that, but definitely would not be getting a multimillion dollar project out of this call for projects. Next slide. So the requested amount that we're anticipating is $850,000. We have a little more work to do in estimating what we, the segments that we've identified. Thankfully, this grant application is not due until mid-September. The RTC review of these grant applications are October, and so these projects would be for construction in next summer or beyond. And prior to really having that final design done, we would include public outreach and coordination with adjacent properties to make sure we're addressing each of those neighborhoods and individual properties in the best way. Next slide, please. So staff recommendation is on the screen. This is also a prior RTC project there on Kennedy where we did not have a sidewalk and now we do. So happy to hear any comments you may have.
Council questions?
I don't have any questions, but I have one comment after the public hearing.
Great. Open it up to public comment. Great, moving right along. Bring it back to council deliberation.
I just wanted to say, I think that the Public Works Department has done a magnificent job of getting grant funding for the city in the last few years. And I think some of these projects could open up some opportunities for us to do more than just sidewalks. At the planning commission level, we spend a lot of time talking about the areas of, you know, 46th, 47th, 48th, 49th, the impact that they currently have, the terrible parking problems they have because there's not enough parking on their street. And these are particularly wide right of ways in Capitola. So I think we have an opportunity, if we're going to do these sidewalk projects, when they're designed, to look at making improvement on these streets that perhaps could include something like some diagonal parking to increase the amount of parking that's available on the street, maybe even doing some bulb bouts that could provide some trees and shade and other improvements in there. So I hope when these come back to us, they will include not just the idea of just doing a sidewalk, but we'll look a little further and see how creative we could be to do other improvements on these streets as part of these projects. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for going after all these grants. It's great. I was just thinking about the sidewalk on Kennedy and I got to use it the other day and I was like, yes, I'm so glad we did this. So it's just, I'm really stoked that we're kind of moving forward in this ADA direction. I think it's really important. We're working on a lot of projects that happen to do with that. So just thank you. I am, I will totally make a motion to authorize staff for the, to submit the application, but welcome to hear any other comments.
I'll second your motion.
A first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. It brings us to our last one, H. Councilmember Jensen.
Yeah, just I'll recuse myself of this item. I own a house on Bay Street and thus, or Bay Avenue, thus I'm having a financial interest in this item, and so I'll be recusing myself.
Thank you.
Last item of the night, same grant program, different project. This is for your consideration, applying for funding to advance the Bay Avenue design. Next slide, please. So just in case anyone wasn't here at the beginning of the meeting, Bay Avenue is an archilural road that goes from Highway One linking to the Capitola Village. It's been identified as an improvement project for quite some time from the city. This image is from our general plan. It has high traffic volumes, has a lot of multimodal use, a lot of students heading to the middle school down Bay Avenue, particularly right now with the bridge being out. Longstanding issues, including congestion and safety issues. And the city installed a quick build project at the Bay Avenue and Hill Street intersection last summer. Next slide, please. So this is the project development to date, particularly of the corridor study. Again, the project as a whole has a, quite a long history, but the most current history is that the city conducted a corridor study over 2024 and 2025. And at the beginning of doing this most recent out study, the council had selected the alternative that included roundabouts envisioned for Bay Hill and then also Bay Capitola Avenue. Kim Lee Horn had done that previous study and is also under contract to do the current property coordination, public outreach, and conceptual design of the corridor. We've been taking data collection all summer, doing outreach to the properties, and are going to start our public outreach here late summer with the intent of having a more formalized conceptual plan for your review in late summer, early fall this year. Next slide. So currently, that's what we're funded up through, is a conceptual design to have what is considered a shovel-ready project and something that is really attractive for state right and federal grants. It is preferable to have a shovel-ready project, which are full plans, designs, will be called PSNE. So this grant opportunity gives us an opportunity to apply for funds to advance that project, about $500,000 to get to that shovel-ready stage. Same schedule as the last presentation, that these applications are due in mid-September and would be awarded at the end of this calendar year. Next slide. So there's a mock-up that you all seen before of the Bay Capitola Ave intersection, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So questions?
So by doing this, we're not making a final, final decision that this is the absolute plan we're going to go forward with because like tonight, we heard from a number of people who are dissatisfied with the plan that we have come up with. This is just going to give us an opportunity to do these drawings and get, apply for this grant.
Correct. We'd still be doing the outreach, we'd still be doing council presentations, we'd still come to whatever that configuration council determines is the best to do, but then we would have the money to go ahead and fully design whatever that configuration would be.
Thank you.
Yeah, my question's along the same lines. I'm just wondering, is this any funding that would be able to be put towards sort of some of the things that we brought up this evening, whether that be a crosswalk put in or different things that are sort of, I'm not, I don't want to use the term quick fix, you know, but like something in the interim? Is that, can this funding be used for anything like that to sort of get the ball rolling faster than just more design or not really?
I would have to look into that. I'll say these grant applications want to, they want to see that you have fully vetted what you're intending on doing. And I think some of the justification for this one would be like, we are doing that public outreach, we have done this history for this project. So to do new capital projects without having done fully vetted that would be less attractive.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. I just want to make sure that we're also outreach to the Bay Ave residents specifically with this, the design of this project.
The Bay Ave, the senior housing?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, they are one of our particular communities that we have outreach efforts for, yes.
And I do like moving forward with the roundabout project. I think, you know, research has shown that roundabouts decrease speed, and when speed is decreased, there's less fatalities, there's less more serious accidents and injuries. So with that said, I can't wait to hear what the residents have to say and see how we can design a corridor that works for everyone and would create a safer community. Thank you.
One quick question about the roundabout. I know the crosswalks are not at the intersection, they're farther away. With that being the case, are they allowed to have flashing lights?
For a roundabout configuration, yes.
Thank you. That's good to hear.
At the roundabout, yes, they are.
I like it.
If there's no more comments, I'd like to move the recommended action.
I think we'll take it to public comment real quick. Public comment. Seeing none? Bring it back to deliberation decision.
I'd like to move the recommended action. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, thank you, everyone. It's been a long night, got, had a lot to do after having a month off, but the good thing is we'll be back August 28th or more. Everyone be safe out there, take care of one another.